Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. There's some familiar faces and some I don't recognise. Welcome, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning, good morning. We'll just let the last few people come in. Pauline to let in, Laura.
Yeah, it says joining.
Brilliant, thank you. Excuse me, I'll just clear my throat. Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the annual Somerset Change of Commerce Somerset County Council breakfast. I was just remarking to councillor David Hall. Last year, we were at the racecourse and I don't think any of us could see what was going to happen to the the point of 2020 onwards from from last January and the January before, I believe we enjoyed a a lively breakfast at the Holiday Inn. So our annual start to the season, so to speak, is always with Somerset County Council. This year, I'm delighted to say that it's sponsored and our partner is BT. If I may, I'll just run through a few housekeeping and then I'll hand over to our first presenter. Housekeeping, if I can ask you, if you haven't just right click on your name to give your identity, your name, so that people know who you are. If you want to put your contact details in the chat function, or your contact company email address, telephone number, etc., please feel free to do so. We will be recording this event, so that will be then left on our Somerset Change of Commerce website for future reference. And if you have any questions, please put them into the chat function and the panel will take the questions at the end. Can everybody hear me okay? And can everybody see okay? Brilliant. Okay. My colleague Laura Percival will be running the presentation. So with no further ado, if I may, I'd like to introduce Shadi Malkawi from BT. Over to you, Shadi. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. So, good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to attend the session today. And so for some of you who don't know me, I've met some of you, I think, previously at some other events. So, yeah, Shadi Malkawi, I am, so I work and sit in the enterprise business of BT, which looks after our corporate and public sector accounts. So I'm responsible for public sector across the South West. And my team will look after NHS, local authorities, housing and universities. With me today are my colleague Simon Haston, who's a CTIO. And he will shortly be taken through the approach and experience in digital fabrics that we've had and what this means to us. And we'd be really interested to hear from you, what your thoughts are. We've also got Susie Marston, who's our marketing and customer engagement lead. So if we go to the first slide, please, Laura, you invest in the South West. Thank you. And so I wanted to really share this slide with you, which just gives you a view of our investment in the South West. I didn't want to go through just with the interest in time in all the areas. This will be shared with you following the call. And also just to note that in the next couple of months, we're actually, so a couple of weeks, we're actually due to release our latest figures on the Economic and Impact Report. And I will place my contact details and share that with you. So if anyone is interested, please give me your details and I'll come forward with that information. And we'd be happy to have a separate conversation with you to go into more detail around some of these areas. And Laura, if you go to the next slide, please. So I just wanted really just to take a moment to just cover really what we're trying to do in the South West. So what we're aiming and striving to do is put you, our customer, at the heart of everything we do like never before. We've kind of set up our business to have local people for local jobs. And so as a team in the public sector, we've been trying to simplify things. So what we're doing is we're trying to get closer to you, understand you as a customer and help you deliver on your outcomes. But also bring you the best of BT innovation and research and ideas. And at the end of the session, I will give some details of of our innovation centre, which we would be happy to virtually take you through that because of the current climate. And ultimately, what we want to do is help build a better organisation, businesses and places for local people. Attend today for me, what was really important, I suppose, what I want to try and get out of the session is to is to hear from you and hear what you have to say so we can learn as an organisation also. So some of the things that I'd be interested to hear from is, you know, obviously what's in the current in everybody's mind is Covid. You know, it's kind of unprecedented times, but I'd be interested to understand how that's affecting you. What are some of the things that you're having to do to change as an organisation? Obviously, the impact of Brexit, but also what digital means to you, because digital means different things to different people. And digitising a place or a city also is completely different to one organisation to another. And Simon is shortly going to take you through our approach and view on digital and digital fabrics. We'll also give you some examples of, I suppose, some of our experience and our approach. And before I hand over to Simon, I just wanted to finish saying that myself and my team are here to support you. Please reach out. We have been working with a number of organisations across the South West to support them in their digital journey, but also help them in funding programmes. We do have an array of teams that are here to help you and actually help support maybe some areas that you have gaps in. So please reach out following the session today and I will hopefully speak to all of you a little bit later. So thank you, and I'll hand over to Simon.
Yeah, good morning, everybody, and thanks, Shadi. And so, yeah, I'm Simon Haston. I'm CTO for BT in regions and developed nations. And I hope you could all see and hear me because I'm actually on my mobile phone. And despite my job title, I couldn't get zoomed to work on my laptop this morning. So it happens to us all. And Laura, I wonder if you could go to the first slide. And I suppose I just wanted to take you through what we call our digital fabric story. And actually, it's very much rooted in innovation and innovation is at the heart of a lot of what I do and what the team around us does. And I suppose a bit of a reflection of where we are. I mean, some of the key themes remain around inclusive growth and climate change. And I suppose health and wellbeing is something that we've seen become more prominent over the last year for obvious reasons. And I think it's fair to say technology hasn't changed in the last year. The digital revolution started pre-Covid. And I think if we reflect on that, that revolution was, a lot of that was in retail, was happening already, transport and the banking system. I think what we've seen from our customers now is a huge shift. The digital is no longer, you know, the preserve of those industries. It is now in education, it's now in the health service, even GPs being happy to take phone calls is a major cultural shift. And actually, one of the areas that's become really, really interesting is the home, the function of our home and how that operates, whether we work here. You know, whether we, I don't know about you, but I have three children, you know, working from home, all using the same technologies as me amazingly. And but what we've really seen now is that that shift from, you know, what potentially we are now is much more of a digital nation. Culturally, a big shift in some sectors that weren't really, you know, the digital uptake wasn't great. And at the heart of this is what we call the convergence of technology. So now more than ever, technology is converging together, whether that is a lot of, it's the heart of what we do, connectivity or data or applications. But that is now combined with that cultural shift, where people are much more willing to adopt technology. That in itself has caused some problems. A lot of what we hear from our customers is the digital divide is getting greater. And there are more and more people being left behind. And so innovation is very much at the heart of what we do. And the next slide is, Laura, if you could pop to the next slide, really just gives you an overview of what we call our digital fabric. And this is a place-based fabric. It is very much focused on outcomes. So we look at productivity and all the technologies behind that productivity, both public and private sector. Climate is at the heart of this. And I'll give example of innovation we're doing around climate, inclusive growth. So how do we support you, the businesses? But actually, how do we actually make that more accessible to everybody? And the fourth outcome that we really focus on is health and wellbeing. And this is largely driven from what, you know, the events of the last year. And we spent probably a year and a half now building six key capabilities. Automation in industry, which is very much focused on manufacturing and business, the movement of people and things. So we do a lot of work with, you know, local councils and public bodies around how things and people and stuff moves around. And that's become far more prevalent at the moment. Monitoring and remote diagnosis. So that's both in healthcare and also in the environment. And it's a lot of work we've been doing with, you know, the health service around remote care. And again, this is an area that has culturally shifted massively. Immersive and creative experiences. It's amazing how many people want to do things differently and immersively. And we're doing a lot of work in, you know, in education, immersive classrooms, tourism around immersive, you know, immersive monuments. And work anywhere, work safely is obviously a big theme in health and wellbeing. But really, what we like to do is underpin that with, you know, a coherent technology foundation. The technology is no longer one thing. And a lot of people talk about connectivity, you know, broadband and full fibre, but actually connectivity is now 5G led. And that 5G led is not just 5G, but it's a whole convergence of Wi-Fi, fixed, mobile. And anybody thinking about a place, connectivity needs to look at it in their own. But more importantly, what does that connectivity use for? So what? How do we get the data and the insights? And how do we pull that together towards a place that we can then, you know, create value and actionable insights? And we can layer applications on the top, we can include SMEs and that. So our innovation programme is rooted in a foundation that is repeatable and absolutely can scale. And what is really important to us is actually being able to co-create. So we work with a whole raft of customers. So some of the use cases I'll show you have not been developed by us, we developed with customers. And whether it's NHS, BBC, Bosch, Warwick University, Scottish Water, and all across the country. And we're bringing, trying to bring this ecosystem together. So that's how digital fabric replaces. And I just want to finish with just some very quick examples of the work we're doing. And so Laura, if you go to the next slide, this is in this is Belfast Harbour and City. So we're putting a 5G private network into Belfast Harbour. But actually Belfast Harbour is a place, it's a city. It's about 20% of Belfast City. And we're putting in a digital infrastructure there that they can then repeat, repeat use case innovation across the top of that. Whether that's artificial intelligence, drone, mobile policing, and logistics and chain management, which has become extremely important for them just recently. So that's one example. And the next example is very much rooted, sorry, Laura, could you pop to the next one? The next example is very much focused on climate. And again, this is down the whole fourth valley. This can be created, digital twin of the fourth valley, and actually start to bring the climate to life. And the fourth valley is fascinating. And it's quite an interesting ecosystem, but it's also a major transport hub, trains, you know, aeroplanes, about four ports. And how do they all play together? So we're putting in sensors and data arrays and insights across the whole fourth valley to then visualise that. So we can actually create a visual of what's going on to inform the Scottish government policy. And so that's one of our key climate ones. And the next example is more industrial. And so Laura, if you pop to the next one is a partnership with the University of Warwick. And this is creating an innovation, almost an innovation living lab. The first focus on autonomous mobility and really autonomous mobility is pretty, pretty new, but it's coming. How does that mix with merciful reality, telemedicine, smart campus and smart buildings and the future of work? And this is a key partnership for us with academia and business. And then all these use cases are driven by 5G. 5G is the heart of what we do. 5G is not the only story. And all these use cases that we have here are set against that technology foundation and there's wider outcomes and capabilities. So thank you very much for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Simon.
Apologies, I meant to hand back to Shadi and I forgot. Sorry, Shadi. I always forget about you, Shadi.
No problem at all. And so guys, in terms of follow-up, so there will be, as you know, a follow-up email that will give the contact details following this. So please reach out. I have also put my contact details on the chat. If you do have any questions or we don't have any time to cover, please let me know. And there is also, as I mentioned earlier, there is an opportunity to attend a virtual session, our BT Innovation Centre based in Ipswich. Obviously, this is remote. We've done this with a number of customers. Virtually, it's worked very well. And we will tailor it to kind of the topics that you want to see and hear. If that is of interest, please let us know. And obviously, please reach out if you do want a more in-depth conversation around digital transformation strategy or some of the things that we covered today. So hopefully, I'll hear from some of you in the near future. And I will now hand back to Stephen.
Thank you, Shadi. Thank you, Simon. I'm rather interested in the Digital Innovation Centre, so I will be putting my name down for that at the appropriate time. Thank you to our colleagues from BT. I know it's a pleasure to hand across to Dr James Gilchrist from Somerset County Council. If I can hand over to you, James.
Hi, thanks, Stephen. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, I can hear you. Good morning.
Brilliant. Morning, all. So, yeah, I'm James Gilchrist and I'm the Senior Economist at Somerset County Council. I essentially lead on, I suppose, all things research and intelligence for the authority and also working closely with our wider partners and stakeholders and maintaining an evidence base. And I guess since the start of the pandemic, that's largely revolved around understanding as best as we can the economic impacts of that pandemic. And so my job's pretty much been taken up by that over the last eight, nine months, I suppose. And I wanted to try and for the purpose of today, just to give a bit of a whistle-stop tour through some of what we do know and what we we sort of think might happen in the year ahead. So if, actually, before we flip onto the first slide, I normally start with a quick plug slide to our website, our sister website, which is www.samsettetrends.org.uk. And I'll put the link in the chat afterwards. But basically, on there, we host all of our research and intelligence, including a much more, I suppose, detailed overview of of the things I'm going to go through today. Thanks, Laura. If you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so just a couple of charts on here. Essentially, looking back across the year, the economy's performance. We can see that gross domestic products, you know, or economic output essentially fell dramatically during the first lockdown. So it fell by 19.8% from April to June 2020. Bounced back reasonably strongly initially after that first lockdown by 16% in the subsequent quarter. But remained some margin lower than where it had been pre-pandemic, so 8.6% below where it was actually at the end of 2019. And the first chart basically illustrates this. And you know, there's going to be some drop on the line there, pretty much says it all, I suppose. And though official figures aren't yet available, the Office for Budgetary Responsibility did say in November alongside the spending review that they expect UK GDP to have dropped by 11% as a whole across last year. In fact, monthly estimates have revealed that growth was already slowing over the summer, with most recent figures for November actually showing a 2.6% decline. And it's worth noting that that was pretty much mostly within the service sector. And so actually, there's still a slight increase, modest growth within manufacturing and construction. And with, but with winter restrictions and the current lockdown, I think most experts are predicting a double-dip recession looks pretty likely early in the year. So it starts with some gloomy news, I suppose. And the second chart here shows weekly hours worked, which as you would expect closely mirrors that of the first chart there for GDP. So economic activity dropped alongside output. And next slide. If we look at how that kind of translates into some of the headline labour market figures, and timing did work out very well for me here because there's actually been a new release of data just this morning. And I'll speak to some of it where I can, but I haven't been able to update the slides, I'm afraid, to advance this morning's meeting. And so the chart on the left here shows how job vacancies fell dramatically in the spring of 2020 as employees, employers essentially just ceased recruiting. They've since began to recover from that record low, but they remain almost a third lower than they were a year ago. This was as of last, so between November, September to November last year, actually now. And the top right chart shows unemployment hitting 4.9%. Now, we know as of this morning that actually from September to November, and we have seen this in the press, it reached a new high of 2021. So we still get to see the biggest kind of impacts on the labour market. But many, but, you know, but they think when government support, like furlough SEISS schemes, several points of support scheme once they end. But we're now, lots of people are actually asking that for that government deadline to be extended. The reality, I think, is the figure will actually be even higher, given the impacts of the current lockdown, which essentially wouldn't have been taken into consideration in the thinking of the OBR towards the end of last year. I should say that figures, what don't show what aren't on here, the figures released today also did show that regionally, the South West unemployment rate for the same period was just 4.1%. So we're actually the, it's actually the lowest behind only Northern Ireland and the East. And interestingly, London has seen a massive jump to 6.9% in this last quarter of data, or last three months of data. At the bottom chart shows redundancies. And these increased, as you can see, from, essentially to record levels. So they've increased between August, from August, October by a record 217,000, reaching a record high of 370,000. And it's likely that we will see even more redundancies for the end of 2020 in latest figures today. And certainly, we know that locally, there have been some notable redundancy announcements. And I'm going to talk about a couple of those shortly. Next slide, please. I won't loiter too much on this one. It's a bit of a cluttered slide, I'm afraid. But it basically just shows one of the kind of local proxies that we have for employment. Now, it's not, it's not a direct measure of unemployment or an official measure of unemployment. But it is a kind of handy little local proxy. And it's the Claimant Council. It's those seeking out of work at work benefits. And you can see across all parts of Somerset, as well as regionally and nationally, it jumped hugely this year. Key things to note, one, they did actually relax the requirements around seeking universal credit as a direct response to the pandemic. And therefore, this figures are slightly artificially inflated. The other thing I would say is that, again, in the South West, we remain in pretty strong position. So we've started from a lower baseline, we remain at a lower baseline. And actually, we've seen a lower increase in the actual count itself than any other part of the country. So that's, I suppose, a positive still. Next slide, please. Just to quickly show you the, so this is just one of the government support schemes. So these are the figures we have for the furlough scheme. And now you can probably guess that it's high here right at the start during the spring, during the full lockdown. And then we see kind of incremental drops in uptake of that government support as restrictions just started to be released. And also, as I think, as the scheme essentially got a bit less generous. We, it remains to be seen, or figures yet haven't been released, as to what happened during the November lockdown. And obviously, now we expect it to increase, but not by nearly as much as it was back in the spring last year, essentially because, as we all know, the economy is still moving along at a reduced rate in a way that it wasn't when things were fully shut down back in the spring. Next slide. I thought it would be quite useful just to show you this because one of the things, I suppose, right from the beginning of the pandemic, we've known that industry is essentially one of the biggest, industry types, essentially one of the biggest determinants or variables when it comes to economic impacts. And this is quite a handy way of showing it because it shows the take-up rate for the furlough scheme across different industries. And you can see, no surprises, it's accommodation, food services, arts, entertainment, recreation, and other services, those sorts of businesses that essentially are forced to either fully close or have been under ongoing restrictions throughout parts of last year that have been most reliant on that scheme. And whereas further down the list, you see things that essentially professional occupations and things where they've either, well, either they've had to continue, there are central services like waste recycling, etc. All of their things can be done from home, like I suspect most of us are doing, are able to do with our work. Next, oh, I should also say that, I came into a slide on this one, but it's worth mentioning that young people, young workers, especially non-graduates are disproportionately likely to work in those industries that have been most affected. And we've seen increasing evidence that 16 to 24-year-olds are amongst the hardest hit by the, by the current crisis. And then unemployment rate is actually much higher for that cohort. So this slide just shows some of the, I suppose, most notable redundancies that we've had announced. Some of these have been anonymised for obvious reasons. And some of it you will have heard of, some of it you, some of it you won't, I suppose. And the most notable among which, you may have seen in the press, Oscar Bay redundancies in charge. I'll tell you, as many as, I think, actually 285 redundancies been announced for this year. And we're actually doing a dedicated piece of impact work on that one to look at what that actually means for the local economy right now. It's in process. I don't know how best we can respond. We're working through our response to redundancy group that we've got in place, working with our district partners and stakeholders to basically work with any of these businesses, businesses, plus many others besides, who are having to make redundancies to try and ensure that they get the support they need, both the business and the employees as well. And next slide. I just wanted to quickly show you, I actually came along and did an event, I think, on this one, Stephen, and towards the end of last year, where we looked at the results from the summer business survey. And I wanted just to say, I suppose, it was a real success, I think, from our point of view, because we had over 1,300 responses from businesses, which is an enormous response rate, really far higher than anything else I'm used to seeing sort of for local business surveys. Which, given, I suppose, the survey apathy we all kind of suffer from, it was quite a surprise, I think. And among the key challenges that were highlighted were things you suspect, I suppose, like cash flow, turnover and profitability, social distancing, etc., as well as some stuff around redundancies. The details, kind of findings from this are actually available on the Somerset Trends website. And I'd encourage you to go and take a look at that. I should also say that, not least because most of the presentation thus far had a bit of a gloomy, gloomy look to it. There were a lot of positives that people and businesses are responding suggesting as well that the situations have kind of given them. So that's worth bearing in mind. And I also wanted to mention this because we're looking to relaunch it in the spring. And to try and see, I suppose, where those kind of challenges and opportunities have changed in the intervening periods, given that circumstances have certainly changed for businesses. Okay, on to the last slide for this little part of my presentation, which is, basically, I wanted to try and give you as best as possible, but bear in mind, this is very much finger in the air. Economic forecasting is, I guess, it's fraught with difficulties at the best of times. And as you can imagine, it is literally more difficult than ever right now. What I wanted to do here, though, is just give you a bit of a flavour of those difficulties, but also share some thinking about what recovery might look like based on current evidence. In simple terms, essentially, the tie to the restrictions placed upon businesses and economic activity by government to stem the spread of the virus. And the longer they remain in place, the greater the impact will be on economic output and jobs in the immediate term, as we've seen on those earlier slides. And I'm sorry if that's stating the obvious. But also, the deeper the economic scarring is likely to be, particularly on things like unemployment. So the longer that the restrictions remain in place, essentially, the harder it will be for businesses and individuals to recover. And I'll not bore you with the exact figures, but just talk to you through the general recovery trajectory with the aid of these two charts on the side. And early on in the pandemic, economic forecasts suggested a stronger return to growth in 2020 with unemployment and redundancies peaking therein. And in reality, as I've already kind of alluded to, continued restrictions has meant that output recovery has actually lagged more than expected. But the kind of unprecedented government support schemes like furlough, along with other financial support to businesses, has actually meant that unemployment grew by far less than expected last year in 2020. And so you can kind of see, if you look at the, at the charts here, the red line is some thinking back in the summer by Oxford Economics. The blue line is the November thinking by the Office for Budgetary Responsibility. And we can see that in terms, on the top one, in terms of output, it actually, you know, it dropped less, it dropped more, sorry, than anticipated. And there's a bit of a drop there again in the blue line for the winter period. And then a steady recovery back through sort of the following years. I wanted to point out in particular the unemployment one below, because what we've seen is, as I've said, unemployment at the moment is far lower than experts thought it would be. But if and when the government, government support does, is removed in the spring, indeed, that does happen, it's likely that the reality is that other part will actually hit a higher level and that recovery is going to take a little longer. So we're probably talking about five or six years even before we're back to kind of pre-pandemic economic kind of wellbeing levels in terms of the general economy. And by way of a closing statement on this part of the presentation, I think we also need to stress that recent weeks have ushered in a kind of a new period of uncertainty. On the one hand, we've seen that arrival of vaccines and the hopeful return to some normality they should bring sometime later in the year. But at the same time, infection rates have soared. And we now find ourselves in that this new national lockdown. It remains unclear to all just how successfully and quickly the vaccine will be rolled out. And thus, as soon said, normality might return. Fortunately, government support to businesses and individuals has also been stepped up significantly in the new year. But these continued restrictions would almost certainly mean a further delayed economic recovery and an increased jobs longer term. And if we just flip onto the next bit, I'm just going to quickly go through the, apologies, this part might seem a little bit dry because it's a kind of because it's a kind of strategy and plan speak, really. But I wanted to give you an overview of where Somerset County Council and its partners are in terms of its recovery and growth plans. David will give you the far more interesting part and talk about the actual detail of the sorts of things we're actually involved in shortly after. And so if you go to the next slide, please, Laura. Essentially, the Recovery and Growth Plan sets out Somerset's approach to economic recovery in light of what this evidence is telling us, as well as our long-term growth potential. And it's joint, a joint piece of work with Somerset County Council and our district partners, but also working with others, including the Chamber. It identifies challenges, gaps and activities to fill them. And it's about basically making our case to government for greater support, to make sure that we're able to recover in a way that we wish to. And at the bottom there, we just see a bit of a timeline of its development throughout last year. And it's due to be signed off by the end of this month by all local authorities within Somerset. If you go onto the next slide quickly, the chart on the top essentially just shows kind of a trajectory for recovery. It's fair to say that it's deliberately simplified insofar as we know that restrictions tightened, loosened, tightened, loosened, et cetera, throughout. And that experience would obviously be different for different businesses and industries. However, it usually illustrates the kind of approach that we kind of have a phased approach in terms of supporting certain industries and businesses. In terms of its aims, it's kind of highlighted the need for us to safeguard jobs in those bedrock sectors that I suppose previously some, some plans and strategies might not have focused on so much because they're more about this, just purely on the high-growth, high-productivity kind of industries, which certainly report important and important to our long-term prosperity. And some of the, you know, we've got some significant opportunities in that sort of arena. But nevertheless, you know, our kind of tourism jobs, hospitality jobs, retail jobs are still really, really important and employ far more people in Somerset than do those other industries. So it's important that we support those. It's about creating those new and better jobs, supporting existing businesses, new start businesses, delivering affordable housing. It's about green recovery, so clean growth, but it's also about inclusive growth. And we're doing a separate piece of work within the authority at the moment on how we look to boost inclusive growth across the activities we're involved in. And the final slide from me, it's separated along three key themes. One around the employment and skills, another around helping businesses and sectors to grow, one around providing infrastructure to enable growth, and another around creating attractive places and homes. I won't go through in turn each of the different delivery tools. And we can share with you certainly the economic recovery plan, once it's publicly available in the next couple of weeks, Stephen, for people if they're interested to see it.
Thank you.
And okay, and that's it from me. So I'm going to pass over to councillor David Hall, who is our Cabinet Member for Economic Development and Community Infrastructure. And he's going to talk about the far more exciting stuff that the authorities actually involved in, that will probably pique your interest. So I'll hand over to you, David.
Thank you very much, James. Stephen, did you want to, it says on the running order, you wanted to say a few words at this point. Is there anything you want to add in?
I was going to introduce you, David, but James has done a sterling job, so that's fine. So I shall leave you to enlighten us, if I may, David, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. My name's David Hall, I'm the Cabinet Member for Somerset County Council, with responsible for economic development, community infrastructure and planning. Rather a long title, but as many of you will know, because I saw a lot of friends and familiar names in the list at the beginning, being involved with the economy, being privileged to work with the economy and businesses is something I've been very lucky to do for quite a long time now in my role as Somerset County Council. In fact, 11 years, I was pondering while I was listening to James. So hopefully, I haven't got too stale in that time, but I've certainly got, I hope, a little bit of an insight into what's going on and the things that matter in Somerset. Now, the focus of my presentation this morning, as James said, is a run-through, a walkthrough, whatever you want to call it, of some of the key activities that are ongoing at the moment and some of the things that are planned for the future. It is a presentation tinged with optimism, I think, because despite all the difficulties that we face, there's an awful lot going on, there's an awful lot to be proud of in Somerset. I am very proud of Somerset, I always say that at the start of my presentations. I absolutely love where we live and work, and I think we've got a great future. So I hope some of these things will encourage and inspire you. There's a fair bit of detail in here, so if there's anything that you want to pick up on, or either need more information on after the event, feel free to contact myself or James or any one of the team, and we're happy to go through them. But this, as I say, is a, an overview and insight in some of those key things. So if we could have the first slide, Laura, please. Obviously, throughout the pandemic, we've been working very closely with the partner organisations, particularly the heart of the South West, LEP and the Growth Hub. And as well as my cabinet role, I'm the County Council Representative Board Member on the LEP. And some of the monies that have come out of the Business Rates Retention Pilot, which we've spoken about at previous get-togethers, have gone towards some of these programmes. And there's some excellent funding been spent over the last 12 months. Over 50K, as you can see, to help early ideas and startup businesses. Particular focus in that one on green recovery. But we've also put a further 125K into new clusters and networks. And something I know that is dear to the heart of many of the members of the Chamber, we've commissioned an organisation called International Trade Matters to provide particular one-to-one support for exporters, both current exporters and exporters of the future. And obviously, that's very pertinent with all the changes that Brexit has brought about. We've introduced a catalyst programme around entrepreneurship for new entrepreneurs, new startup businesses, help them to develop through the early stages. And there's also some money available for carbon reduction, for carbon reduction grants, to help businesses to reduce their carbon footprint. If I can have the next slide, Laura, please. Now, a key part of the South West economy, and of course, the Somerset economy, is tourism. And VESP is something called the Somerset Visitor Economy Support Programme, designed to provide help as we come out of the pandemic. Obviously, as James alluded to and showed in his slides, that's the sector that's been very hard-hit. So the priorities of that new programme are around a one-stop portal for engagement in the sector through Visit Somerset and Visit Xmore, lots of business advice and digital support. There's a digital theme to this morning's discussions, and I will come back to digital again in the future, but hugely important for our visitor economy, as more and more of the booking, the preparation for visiting our area is now very much online. There's been a lot of research to drive positive destination and COVID-safe publicity messages. I think we've heard a lot about, over the period of the pandemic, about how the shape of people's holidays, the way they're going to spend their leisure time is going to change. And the importance of making sure that people understand what COVID-safe actually means and how that translates into an enjoyable holiday in their own country, which is very much going to be the case for a lot of people this year and in the future. And it's also designed to promote growth and add value to the market through green tourism, which is ever-present and ever-more important as we move forward. If I have the next slide, Laura, please. Now, I wanted to say a little bit about transport and infrastructure, what's been going on. And I've got to start by that lovely picture of the squibbing in the bottom right of that slide, that great big explosion. I'm very proud to say I'm right in the middle of that, and I survived to tell the tale. And so did our leader, David Fothergill, who stood next to me. But that was the opening celebration for the Colley Lane Bridge, that fantastic bridge in Bridgewater, which has won so many design awards and something we're very, very proud of, delivered on time, on budget, just before the pandemic hit. But there's a lot else been going, a lot of other things been going on as well. You'll be familiar with the Yeovil Western Corridor work. That was completed, again, just before the pandemic. But 13.8 billion pounds worth of work on improving Yeovil's infrastructure. And only yesterday, I drove through Junction 25. For those of you who haven't been down there recently, the new roundabout and the new cutoff, as you come in from the Henley direction, is now in place. Work is ongoing to increase the capacity of that junction. In preparation, we hope, for the development around that site and also ultimately the dueling of the 358 from the Summerfields Roundabout. But that work, it's been, you don't often hear this, but the pandemic has almost been a bonus in terms of being able to get on with that work, you know, you know, user-friendly, a non-disruptive way. I hope to be completed by May. It will make a huge difference on the way into Taunton. There's also work going on around Trenchard Way and the Firepool development to open up that area, provide a new signalised junction and better access to the railway station. And there's a lot of things going on in the background, or in active travel schemes, extending the longer-term infrastructure, and also small improvement schemes. Each of the county councillors has a budget or has an allocation for small improvement schemes to help improve traffic flow and infrastructure in their local area. And there's 29, 28 schemes been delivered in the last year alone. So although we all complain about the roadworks, there's an awful lot going on to improve the physical infrastructure of the county and working in the background to make it easier for business to operate, as well as for all of us to get around the place. Okay, next slide, Laura, please. This is just an overview of things to come, because there's a lot more in the pipeline. Jumping around the slide a little bit, because I already mentioned the 358. You know, we are still very much, we believe, on target to get the 358 jewelled. We've all heard a lot about Stonehenge, but again, it's still on target. There is a legal challenge in around Stonehenge at the moment. And I think most of us who've been discussing this and working this for a very long time recognise the importance in terms of a second key road link into the South West of getting that Stonehenge tunnel actually built. And I remain confident that it's going to happen. A lot of people, some of them in quite senior positions in government, said it would never happen, but I really believe it is on the cards and moving forward, and we will see it in a relatively short space of time. Another big one there, which has been in the planning stage for a long time, but is gradually moving forward, is the A39 Ashcombe-Walton bypass. Again, talked about for, literally for generations, you know, I can remember as a teenager that being discussed. And that was a very long time ago. It's now actually moving into the planning stage, and I think we'll see movement on that before too long. And there's a lot of other more local stuff going on. There's now funds available around the Dumble Roundabout area to improve access into Bridgewater and off the M5 in that direction. And linked to that, in the other direction, of course, is the work that's going on around Gravity and the new road development to gain access to that site. I won't read the whole list, but I just wanted to reassure you that, you know, the, the, the transport guys, our highways people, you know, have not been at rest while all this is going on. There's still an awful lot of things happening in the background, which will bring positive improvements in the future. Okay, if we could move on again, Laura, please. I'd like to mention our two innovation centres, the one on the left, Iero. I saw Simon Barker's name when we started the session this morning. Something that Simon and I and all of us are very proud of is this joint development of the Iero Innovation Centre on the very edge of Leonardo's factory down in Yeovil. A fabulous, fabulous facility, which is due to open, hopefully, or due to be completed by the end of February 2021. So within the next couple of months. It seems like only yesterday, but it was in fact a very long time ago, when Simon and I sat in his office in Yeovil and discussed the possibility of bringing this to fruition. It's been a challenging path, but it's a successful path. And it's really going to put Somerset on the mark in terms of aerospace and innovation, not just in the UK, but literally in the whole world. On the right is the Phase 1 of our Innovation Centre in Bridgewater. That's been fully occupied for some time now. But Phase 2 and Phase 3 are nearing completion and are already booked up and fully occupied. Just off the M5, just off the Dumble Roundabout that we just talked about a moment ago, within sight of all the exciting developments that are going on, not just in Bridgewater, but across the River Parrot, looking towards Hinkley Point, Hinkley Point C, and everything that's happening there. So again, very much putting Somerset on the map for the future. If we could move on again, Laura, please. In terms of, sorry. Beg your pardon. Sorry, I confused my own slides there for a moment. I just wanted to mention also the Digital Innovation Centre that we're proposing in Taunton as part of the Firepool development. That shot that you can see there is looking in the direction of the Innovation Centre. And on the left is the turn down into the new station, or into the station development and the new station car park. It's a great opportunity to capitalise particularly on our relationship with one of our hidden gems in Somerset, which is the Hydrographic Centre in Taunton and their digital expertise. That will open up digital development and a digital cluster in Taunton. Again, I believe it will be a centre of excellence for the whole of the county and indeed for the whole of the South West. Planning is ongoing at the moment, but we're aiming to start construction very quickly with opening in the summer of 2022. Next slide, please, Laura. On the smaller, but no less important scale, I just wanted to mention our programme of enterprise centres around the county. We've continued to enter, develop these enterprise centres over recent years. And the two most recent ones that you can see there in the picture on the slide, on the left is the Wavelliscombe site, which is now complete. And on the right is the development across on the other side of the county in Bruton. 69 tenants and 220 Somerset businesses supported across the county. It's been a fantastically successful programme, supporting grassroots business. And it's something, you know, I'm very proud of, and we will continue to do and continue to develop as time goes on. Thank you, just can have a sip of water. I'm not used to all this talking, Stephen. Right, next slide, Connecting Devon and Somerset. We have a digital theme today. It's only right that I mention progress on a CDS, Connecting Devon and Somerset. Just to remind you, Connecting Devon and Somerset is the intervention programme, government-supported, government-funded, or part-government-funded, to intervene into the market and provide broadband connectivity, superfast broadband connectivity to areas that wouldn't normally be reached in the short to medium term by the commercial rollout. Although there have been challenges in this programme, because it is a very challenging programme, we have achieved huge success over the last four or five years. Somerset currently, or the CDS area currently has superfast coverage of broadband of over 92%. And that's before the allocation of the latest contracts. Now, I think the pandemic has brought home to us the absolute importance, the vital nature of digital connectivity. And whilst 92% is a great success, a great achievement, it's not enough because the people don't have it, for them, it's an absolute disaster. And they feel that they're being dropped further and further behind. So in tandem with the CDS rollout, and we have just awarded three new contracts, or four contracts to three suppliers, Airband, TrueSpeed and Wessex Internet, we do continue to lobby government extremely hard about solving the problem of the final mile, as it used to be called, the gap for those really hard-to-reach places. There is a big disappointment for us in what I'm talking about, because in the Autumn Financial Statement, for those who've picked it up, Boris's much vaunted commitment for 100% of broadband coverage, usable broadband coverage by 2025 was reduced to 85%. Now, that really is bad news for those very hard-to-reach areas. We're well ahead of the game, as I say, with 92%. We're well ahead of the game, as I say, with 92%. When these contracts have been fulfilled over the next two to three years, we will move up towards 97%. But it's still not enough. There are still people out there who cannot get the digital connectivity that they deserve. So we will be working very hard to lobby government. We'll be working with our partners, particularly BT, of course, to see what can be done. I just wanted to reassure everyone listening this morning that this is a key priority for us moving forward. It's not something that's forgotten, it's not something that can be forgotten. And we will be driving forward as hard as we possibly can to find a solution. But at the moment, the complete solution is not yet there. It's something that government have yet to address. Next slide Laura, please. It wouldn't be right, of course, in, in talking about developments, what's been happening without a brief reference to Hinkley, Hinkley C. The project rolls forward, it continues, we're assured to be on target and on budget. And it's, I'm delighted to say that the site and the management of the site have become an exemplar for working and managing Covid during these very difficult times. There is a lot more to come, obviously, but already in, in terms of where, where our thinking is in managing the impacts of a project, we already have to look to the future in terms of what comes after Hinkley. And a lot of our work, a lot of the work of the teams is focused on that legacy, making sure that we don't get into the situation that you could argue it happened before with Hinkley A and Hinkley B, where they came, they built the power station and they went away again. Much of the work that I've talked about this morning, much of the focus is on securing that legacy for the future and making sure that Somerset is well positioned, not just to take advantage of the development of the power station now, but to make sure that we're anchored into that for the future. Next slide, please Laura. I just wanted to talk very briefly about other opportunities and forgive me, or I just changed my notes slightly. I'll start with Hinkley Point C. As well as Hinkley C, you will be well aware that there are the two big sites of Hinkley A and Hinkley B. Hinkley A is in process of development, process of decommissioning. Hinkley B will shortly be decommissioned. Sorry. I've lost my pointer. Bear with me a moment. Yeah, Hinkley A is in the process of decommissioning. Hinkley B will shortly be entering the decommissioning phase. So as time goes on, there will be quite a lot of land out at the point, which is, isn't actually in economic production. Now, post the energy white, white paper, government is very keen to produce, pursue fusion energy as a way forward for the future. Now, I emphasise that this is very early days and this information that I'm about to give you is fairly hot off the press. But the UK Atomic Energy Authority has launched a process to investigate the possibility of finding a site for a fusion demonstrator plant. It's early days, we don't know how this is going to go. But potentially those two sites out at Hinkley Point could provide an ideal opportunity, which if it had legs in the future, could really be the next big thing after Hinkley Point C. At the moment, we're at the stage of registering ourselves for an expression of interest. As I say, very early days, we don't know how this is going to go. But the two areas that are particular focus for us, one is the site itself and one is the potential for the R and D side of things and the marketing side of things to have some connection with the Gravity site in Bridgewater. So if it goes forward, it could be, as I say, a really big thing. I don't want to get too excited about it at the moment, but there is a great opportunity there for the future. This is all about looking to the future. So I will keep the chamber and members very much informed as we go forward as to how we get on with that expression of interest. Also working in the background, Bridgewater and Glassenbury are two Somerset towns that have identified in the government's list of 101 left behind places eligible for town deals. So plans are being put forward, bids are being put forward for funding to help those towns develop and catch up. If they're successful, this could well provide funding for things like contribution to the Dumble Roundabout that we've talked about. It could provide a future for Bridgewater docks, which at the moment, you know, really are, they have fallen behind. They're, they're a problem in the very centre of Bridgewater. They're not receiving the attention that we would like to see them receive. This could provide a solution and a future for the docks in the centre of one of our key towns in the county. And finally, on my list of ongoing issues and things that are happening, I just wanted to assure everybody that we are very focused on what I call the phosphates issue, for want of a better word. The concerns around the block on planning development, particularly in areas of South Somerset and Sedgmore, due to the issue of phosphates in the water supply, which have been raised by Natural England, who are a statutory consultant. Now, at the moment, not many people may be aware of this, but it is providing, it is proving a big problem for ongoing planning development and will be a blocker for development as we come out of the pandemic unless we find a future. At the moment, planning has pretty much ground to a halt in, so planning approval has pretty much ground to a halt in South Somerset. There's no new development going on until this issue of nutrients in the water supply is resolved. There's a lot more information available, a lot more that we could talk about if anybody wants to know more. But again, I just wanted to provide the reassurance that even though we're all tied up with themes Covid, there's a lot of work going in the back, on in the background to resolve this particular issue. And finally, if I could have the last slide Laura. I don't really intend to talk to Covid, that's the Covid slide, this is not really the purpose of this presentation. But I just wanted to pay tribute publicly to all the officers and workers in Somerset County Council who have been amazing in the way they are dealing with this, this challenge. Many of them have been reassigned to supportive roles in rolling out the vaccine, in rolling out the testing centres, in all the complex areas of adult social care and childcare. They've done an amazing job, they're all working behind the scenes. And whilst all this is going on, I think it's a huge tribute to their commitment that all the sort of things that I've talked about this morning are still happening in the background. We're still pushing forward and we're still looking forward very much, as I said at the start of my presentation, to coming out of the pandemic to a positive, a bright future for Somerset. So I'll leave it there Stephen and hand back to you if I made that point.
Thank you very much David, absolutely brilliant. Thank you for that information and also James. Just a, a couple of notes to me, a big thank you to our sponsor and partner BT, to Shadi, to Simon, to Susie. And once again, a thank you to James and David for the insight. Certainly from my perspective, I shall have my name down for the tour of the innovation centre in Ipswich. And James, I don't envy your position in forward forecasting, forecasting the, the economic position of the county in the coming year 2021, not, not a challenge I would wish to, to take up. We have had some commentary in the Q and A box, if I can bring that up, but also some, some detail. But if I may, I'll start with, are there any hands up and are any questions for any of our presenters, be it from BT or from the Somerset County Council? Laura, if you shout, if you can see the hand before I can.
We've got Graham, Graham Crosby has got a question. I can't see on the screen Graham.
We take Graham and then move across to Simon. Graham, your question.
I said it would be hand up. Yeah, Graham Crosby from Level Up, also the current Chair of the Chamber. And just a question around the infrastructure for electric vehicle recharging across the county. Who, is that responsibility that the, that the county council shares with other parties? Or is that something that's left predominantly to, to, to private sector, to national government?
That's a great question. Who would like to take that? David, in terms of the county council role or involvement?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a start and James can chip in by all means. Broadly speaking, it's a shared responsibility. It's, there's no simple answer to it because obviously as part of our, our green strategy, our move to carbon neutrality by 2030, it's something that's factored into those plans. But there is of course a cost attached to it. I often have this question raised by parish councils and village halls. And it often gets ignored that actually someone has to pay for the electricity that's actually provided as well as providing the infrastructure to actually make the capability. So, and there's also a responsibility on government in terms of planning regulation to make sure that electric charging facilities are factored into future developments and, and planning applications. So it's a complicated picture. It's, it's partner-led, we, you know, we all work on this together. And my hope is as we move forward that a more cohesive strategy, not just for Somerset, but for the whole of the country in terms of how we approach this through the planning process will emerge. You also, of course, and this is probably not a debate for, for today, you then get into the wider debate of where does the electricity come from? And we're not yet at a point, I believe, where we have, you know, an energy production capacity that will match the targets set by government in terms of not just electric vehicles, but all things electrical in terms of home heating and all the rest of it. Nuclear obviously, and I think is now acknowledged, pays a significant part in that as zero carbon baseline generation. But the overall strategy has yet to be developed. And it's something that we, we press very hard through a forum called Hinkley Strategic Development, where we engage directly with the government office for nuclear. I'm sorry if that's a little bit of a convoluted, complex answer, but it's, it's a complex subject which has many aspects to it. James, I don't know whether you want to add anything to that?
Thanks David. I'm just going to add, I suppose, that I can pop a couple of links in the chat afterwards. It's not my direct area expertise, but I have been kind of more on the sidelines involved in the development of the Somerset Climate Emergency Strategy, which was signed off in the autumn. It covers lots and lots of different themes across energy, business, farming and food, built environment, supply chains and also transport. And off the back of that, they've developed a EV charging strategy. And I can, I've just found the link, I can pop it in the chat. But basically, it's a, it's a joint piece of work between the five authorities. And it highlights the need essentially, what, where the question comes from really, to, to support and develop an EV charging infrastructure across Somerset. And it, it sets out a number of those kind of challenges that David just, just mentioned, as well as the opportunities we've got. So if I can pop that in the chat and then if there are any more specific questions that I'm not able to answer, then I'm always happy to refer to a colleague.
That's great. Thank you James. Hopefully that answers that question for you Graham. I'll move across to Simon. Good morning Simon.
Morning Stephen. Hi David James and thanks ever so much. And it's really good to see so many of those things David, that we talked about as concepts around the let board table and times gone past being turned into reality. So really good work going on, great to see. My question is really, you were thinking yesterday that Joe Biden's come out pretty forcefully on his Buy American campaign. Is there something we can do about keeping business in Somerset to help with our recovery? You know, there was an awful, a good work done around procurement opportunities for Hinkley. But if we can find a way of flagging up both public and private sector procurement opportunities to companies in Somerset, around the badge of keeping work in Somerset, that's going to really, really help our recovery. It's also green because it's going to cut down on transport miles, isn't it? So is there something that Chamber, Council, let's try to work together on trying to develop some kind of hosting activity for public and private sector procurement opportunities in the, in the county?
I guess there's, there's two bits to that. You mentioned the, the chamber, I'm gonna, I'm just, I'll respond to the last bit first if I may. And then I think hand over to David and James again. From a chambers perspective, Simon, a lot of people have heard me and my view on levelling up. You know, they talk about north-south divide, but it's not, it's the south-east and the rest of the UK that needs to level up. The South West is, is drastically behind where we need to be. We are making a great headway. David mentioned our own, some hero of the UK Hydrographic Office, a world leader, indeed world-leading manufacturing of rotary helicopter in Yeovil. The Gravity Project Hinkley, the largest construction site in Europe, we're starting to see some traction. But we're still, and it was a point I was going to make with Simon in terms of the digital vibe, we are still behind. And, and it's incredibly frustrating. And I'm going to go on to that point that I've spoken about before, about the northern powerhouse, the Midlands engine, the Oxford Cambridge Ark. We need, we need to join together. From a business perspective, and there's an announcement actually coming this week, Somerset Chambers of Commerce has been working over the last 18 months with the other chambers in the South West as a combined group in terms of representation, the, the figures are pretty, pretty strong. 35 billion pounds worth of representation for businesses. And we work very closely with Cornwall, with Dorset, with Devon Plymouth and with Business West and indeed with South Wales Chamber, with Heather Myers, as a representative of business for the South West. And we're behind, for example, the STEP programme, which is the UK Atomic Energy. And they're looking to point to one of these fast reactors. And we're, we're 100% behind, you know. Ideally, I'd like to see it in Somerset, I'd like to see it on, on other sites, but they're after some pretty big chunks of land. But what we will do is we would also actively support it if it was in the South West in terms of further up the M5 at Albury or in, in South Wales, because I think the South West has too long been, been left behind. David, that's my rant over. Your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you Stephen and thanks Simon. I know exactly where you're coming from. And there are lots of different answers to your, your question. The objective of your question is absolutely spot on. You know, we, we've got to get the focus on the South West and on, you know, making the most of what we've got and making sure that procurement recognises what we've got. I'm just going to focus on a couple of answers, otherwise I shall waffle endlessly. Of course, yeah, we already have a, in, in terms of the local authorities, we still have a bi-local where possible policy, which will be developed further through our, our climate change strategy as we go forward. That's already in place. One of the biggies, I think we've learnt a lot from Hinkley Point in terms of how to get the, the supply chain focused on what's available locally and make the most of local resources. Stephen, you're well versed in this in terms of the, the work that the chamber has done. I think that work is transferable, particularly to things like Gravity that you've already mentioned. We've got a strong engagement, a strong partnership with the Gravity team as we go forward and we need to develop that. And, you know, there is potential there, of course, around Iero, you know, much closer to Simon's heart and the opportunity to, you know, expand that facility of a centre of excellence for aerospace in the South West. Another big one that we've got to get right, that I've already mentioned before, we've got to get this digital connectivity in the South West sorted. We're working on our physical resources, rail is not where it should be at the moment. Road is coming along, particularly if we get the 303 sorted. And if we get the digital connectivity sorted with our relative proximity to both the Midlands and the South East, we are ideally suited to, or, we are ideally located to be part of the economic future of, of the whole UK. But we've got to get that digital footprint correct so that people can actually take advantage of it. Those are some of the key things that we've got to do. There's a lot more in there as well, but I totally support what you're saying Simon.
I wonder whether one of our colleagues from BT, whether Simon wants to just bring up on that as well. You talked about the digital divide. What are your thoughts?
Have we lost him?
No, no, I'm here, don't worry. Sorry. I mean, that's a tough question. And I, I think, I think it's, probably goes back to my earlier statement. Obviously, there's, there's economics and commercials in the last mile and rural for us as BT. And certainly what we're looking at more as a rural play and we see next year's big rural. And actually, the new, you know, new connectivity coming through is, is very interesting. So take 5G for example, at the moment, a lot of 5G is silly centre. So take 5G, for example, at the moment, a lot of 5G is city centres. But actually, 5G has got a potential rural play here. It is cheaper to put in. It is faster than some full fibre. But actually, what it is about is looking at that whole strategy for a place. So satellite, it's got a master role to play. You know, LoRaWAN, 4G, 5G and full fibre. And I suppose it's how, you know, how we work with communities like huge look. What's, what's that, that convergence of connectivity? And satellite is a very interesting area at the moment. Obviously, Elon Musk is putting thousands and thousands of low orbit satellites up into the, into space. And we're, we're working very closely around how we combine satellite, IG, full fibre and converse. So listen, I don't have an easy answer because there isn't one. But I think there are multiple ways of providing connectivity. Connectivity is, is progressing at, at the rate of knots at the moment.
Great, thank you. And, and, you know, we've, as chamber, have been behind all, all the areas of infrastructure, road, rail. Air and connectivity in terms of digital and will constantly amplify what businesses have to have. I think as James touched on, there is a thought process that we're in a pretty good place to start recovery from. That we don't have one of these major conurbations where we're going to be hit really hard. Covid has been a wretched situation. But we were on a lower unemployment level to start with in Somerset and the South West. So I think we, we have a strong footing to start back from, James. I'm looking at you in terms of, I think that, that's a fair commentary. There was another question that was in the chat and this is, and it's a bit of a contentious one, David, and I apologise. But there was a note, if I may find it. That was asking about the unitary move. And I should point out that it is not a political conversation, but the question was asked, Alan Swain, Alan from Stantec has asked. Is the proposal for moving towards being a unitary authority for Somerset an opportunity or a distraction?
Happy to take that one, Stephen.
Mark, thank you, David. That's very kind. I didn't want to put you on a particular political road. But I just thought we did say we would open these questions up. Thank you, David.
Yeah, no, and in taking it, I will steer right away from the political side of things. I obviously recognise that the chamber is completely neutral on this. The very simple answer is that it's a huge opportunity. Just to remind those who haven't kept up with the debate, there is universal agreement amongst the, the politicians of Somerset. That a unitary or a unitary authority is the way forward. And I'll come back to why that is in a moment. The disagreement, if I can call it that, or the debate is probably a better word, is what form that unitary authority should take. Whether it should take the form of one single unitary authority for what is conventional Somerset, or whether it should take the form of two. And I'm not going to enter into that today because that's veers towards the political, which is where we want to go. But the whole idea behind unitary is that it is an opportunity to do more and to do better. It's about bringing together, you know, those aspects of local government that need to be brought together. To simplify the administration, to simplify the delivery of the service. And to make savings that can then be ploughed at, ploughed back into doing more for the people and the businesses of Somerset. You, you will know, and you know, your predecessor was also a great advocate of this. It's long been the case that businesses have been asking for a single point of contact for all issues, planning and licensing and so on. And that's just one example. What form that will take, you know, that's still under discussion. And although the business cases have been formulated, the actual decision comes from the Secretary of State. And we're, we're waiting on that decision at the moment. But it is a positive thing. It's designed to make things better and to make things better for the long term, for the future. So it's definitely not a distraction. It's an opportunity.
Brilliant. Thank you for taking that, David. As you quite rightly point out, we are politically neutral and it's always difficult when a, a, a question comes in. But I appreciate the answer and your honesty on that. Thank you. Are there any further questions from, for our panel, for BT, for Somerset County Council? Can I, if there are, can I ask you either just to raise a hand? I think I've covered all of those in, in the chat room to answer some of the questions. Yes, the presentation is being recorded. I'm looking at Laura. I think she's going to nod. The presentation is being recorded and that will be posted on to the Somerset Chambers of Commerce website. I think if I may, then I'm going to say one final thank you to BT, to Shadi, to Simon. I noticed Nick's on, hi Nick, and to Susie. And also, if I may, a big thank you to James and David from Somerset County Council as always. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to supply you with a breakfast today. But as always, lively commentary and a good debate. And thank you to both our sponsors BT and to Somerset County Council for your time today. All of the links will be left on the, the, the website. And if you have any further informational detail you want to get in terms of the Innovation Centre, you can either contact the team at BT directly. Or come through the chamber. And I would urge you to have a look at the website that James has spoken about, about trends. It gives some really in-depth information about what's happening within your county of Somerset. So with no further ado, if I may, I shall bid you farewell. Thank you. This has been a Somerset Chambers of Commerce production. Good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Excellent.